Okay, we delay. All right. We got nothing else until seven twelve? Nothing?
Uh-oh. What'd you give me? This one? Says draft.
No, that was the right one.
What are we doing?
Right. Mike, I don't have anything. Talk about those minutes.
Yeah, something on another right one.
That'll make you do that. That wasn't mean walk. That wasn't nice. But I wasn't.
Eight, eight twelve, seven twelve for next hearing. We got nothing else. Hey, Carl. Carl, is that your pickup out there?
Yeah. Well, which one?
Green.
No, that's Jim's. Jim Johnson's.
And his car's there too?
I don't think his car is there. Rick's is there.
Oh, that's Rick's?
Then I'm on the end with the town car.
He's in my space, how's that?
Feel free to tell me.
That's for Jack.
Aye.
I thought.
He's on football.
When we're having master plan every week or every meeting.
No.
Did, I used to do that, and then after the last meeting, no one said to put it back on, so I'm sorry if you wanted to do that. I apologize.
I may have to go.
I will put it back on. I'm sorry. That's too bad.
By the time I saw it, it was still delayed.
Sorry.
No, that's right.
Next time, you'll have more to say from the way.
Does it really have to be honest, just? I mean, we're not voting on anything, or?
I, I don't.
That might be a first mistake.
Yes.
Your second.
But it's.
Let's see, I mean, all it is, we don't have distinct, like, can't they just update? But I guess if somebody wanted to know, happening, they would look at it. Yeah, sorry, I apologize for that.
Probably over here on Sasha.
Houston or the right.
Yeah, that is very, and that's very unusual. This is why we'll start hearing six, seven, oh five.
The ten day thing. Because I've already spotted them, plus he hasn't started, so it's been a while. And plus he said, yeah, today is something.
They're putting you in a Chevett?
I said, no, I put. I'm putting in some equivalent to what I have. They put me in a Chevelle, I'll put. The salesman in the trunk.
There it is. Oh, I found it. Last memo was fine.
What?
Last memo, I found it.
Oh, you all lost one? Jory Lane's already getting milled. It's not even that old.
Well, early nineties, thirty years.
G S Bailey?
Yeah.
Yeah, could have moved when I was.
Remember, Jack, some of that paving wasn't the greatest in the world. But that's a long time, it should, even twenty-five years is straight.
You saying Maggie didn't watch him?
Victor.
Oh.
Well, it could have been Maggie in that age.
Yeah, because Mark was here.
Maybe just about.
Mark was here until.
Uh, Mark Oviello.
Yeah, until ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Seven. Just, just before I came.
I go by and I see. They're ripping up the street.
Piece of Elm Street.
Why does it say to Old Elm? That's not a priority, Old Elm?
I don't think it's ours anymore.
Old Elm Street?
I don't think so.
In front of me?
Yeah.
That's towns? It's the towns forever, till state.
It was a county way.
Yeah.
And when they relayed out, when they straightened it out. I think that got the, all that was abandoned. County ways don't become town ways, state ways do. But we should pave it anyway.
Trenches. The trenches down there. The other thing is, uh, Rick buying covers that don't fit anymore onto gates.
Always an issue.
And the one in front of me, I hear every night, boom, boom. They've replaced it a couple times, it just goes.
I'll send the message through, but don't expect too much.
Is it a sidewalk lift?
I'll give him some shims.
I'm organizing a canvas.
A strip to it? You know that strip? I don't know what to call it. Where Old Diamond Beers off. If you're on Diamond off of Stone.
Old Diamond's off.
The sidewalk. In front of those three houses that leads to the parking lot.
Sorry.
Someone's gonna get killed on that curve. I think of the sidewalk were improved.
Hold Diamond to Stone.
No. No, if you come off of Stone onto Diamond Street.
Yes.
And then you drive as far as where Old Diamond goes off to the right.
Yep.
That sidewalk on Diamond, across from the woods.
Okay.
From, right from where Old Diamond starts, all the way to the parking lot.
Ben?
Yeah, it's really, like, small and non-kept well, and the people who used to live there had growth, so I think it damaged the sidewalk, their trees and stuff. And when you come down Diamond Street, there's almost always someone walking in the street to avoid the sidewalk. And they, I, I cringe when I see them with the baby carriages.
I took care of it for mine down to the parking lot, because it was overgrown.
No, it needs to be addressed all the way.
No, it needs to be addressed, it's Old Diamond. That's a big rut.
Yeah, but.
And all the people walk that way, because they like that better.
Yeah, no, I'm telling you, every time I go down Diamond Street, it's always.
It doesn't make any sense.
Can you fix the?
I'll look at it.
Can you fix the grass on Diamond Street?
Maybe there's some kind of.
Lay it dead.
No, he's talking about my lawn is.
They're crossing the church.
Do you have grubs?
I don't know.
He could only hope.
That's not my household.
Because I, mine went dead, but the, they came back, but a couple of spots I looked at, it's gotta be grubs.
Two dogs don't help the issue.
No, they don't.
Did you get a permit to raise grubs?
Talk to someone else about it.
I tell you what, Kate, if it was grubs, I'd like grub, because it would just peel right off. You could just reseed it in a heartbeat. No, no, it died. It's not a spot like that, everybody does, with so much dead grass. All this time. Hey, since you're my agent, and you should be getting me a car, Kyle, you're here.
Yep.
Like, it's where Tony would keep. Oh, who did your fence down there? Was it Walpo?
It was.
How much was it?
It was terrible, it's, it, don't fall there, they didn't do it right.
Because the guy I work for is having a pool or a deck or, you know, I don't do that. He got a price for a fence. Didn't see the one around my pool?
No.
It's just a rot, it's aluminum. Hundred thirty feet, he goes, how much you think? I don't know. Thirty grand? I mean, I said twenty, he says, no, thirty-eight thousand. What do you got? Walpo Outdoors, there's your problem.
The guy in East Walpo was good, I liked him, he did my house.
George?
Yeah.
George did, George did mine. Got rid of the chain link, because it kept getting beat on from soccer balls. It wasn't my kids, because we don't play soccer.
It's time.
You going by that one? No, we go by that one. All right. Now we're being after, now at seven twelve, we have a continued Marion Street subdivision, continued here, and another three seconds, two, one, and another continued fourteen twenty-nine site plan. With being said, Mr. Glosser. John, come on.
Thank you, John Glosser, loss engineering forty-six E Street in East Walpo, Mr. Marie, John Marie is here with me.
Would have hoped you had that set up while. I would have hoped you would have had that set up.
Oh, by now. Uh, we're, I was asleep at the switch. Um, so, um, you know, I got, Carl was hanging up to give me his lead today, there's a couple of things on there that he's looking for, mostly just sort of Scrivener things. We're too cross now. Um, and so, um, but really didn't, all the changes to the plan since we saw you last, last were Scrivener type things, there really isn't any, um, s, um, in words, um, you know, changes to the plans that would affect anything that we saw, I mean, I'll go over them again, but it's the same, nothing's really changed on that. Um, and then, the only other issue, um, that, you know, sort of been floating around is that I think you, there's some sort of a letter or a comment from the Sewer and Water Department, or the Sewer and Water Commission, about creating an easement from the end of Marion Street here onto Main Street. And so I did have a attorney up and, um, submit a letter, and I have copies of it, if everyone didn't get it, but basically, the reason that can't happen is because John Marie, the applicant and the sort of owner of this, you know, he has this exception to develop this, he doesn't own this property. This is owned by the condominium, so he can't grant to the town of Walpo something that he doesn't own. So we could show it on a plan, but it could never be granted to the, to the town. So it's fruitless to show it on the plan, and it would almost be deceptive on our part, so I don't want to do that. And, you know, it would be for the purpose of, I guess, in the future someday, when the town has some money, uh, you know, hey, what are you gonna do with this money, let's move that water main, so Marion Street water mains, it's all that long, it's about three hundred and twenty-five feet or so, so it's not.
Well.
And it ends with a hydrant, so they can blow it off.
Good news to you, John, we don't have that.
I didn't say any of that stuff.
When did you meet with them?
I heard it from somebody, that this was a concern, or a request.
And we got nothing.
When, when did you meet with them?
I never met with them, I heard.
Your honor?
You gonna? Start calling you Schultz there, John?
Real old?
You gonna call you Schultz?
Yeah, yeah.
Now I think we need an updated letter from Sewer and Water.
They didn't give it to us, they had the opportunity.
Losses during, so.
The other thing is, it had ample opportunity, so. We got nothing.
Okay. Well, but as I said, and, and I do have the letter from the attorney. John just simply doesn't own the property. He just doesn't own the property between this line.
Condo associate.
He just simply doesn't own it, so he can't convey it to anyone, because.
Well, would have been, the timing would have been the original.
When they did the site plan, and, and, you know, I mean, you know, from a, you know, professional engineer opinion, it is always good to move water mains whenever you can, but.
Yeah, but we got a lot of these, they never got looped, they're just there forever, never, never.
Yeah, I had a long conversation with others about that today, about other easements that I got involved with, with having to unwind the easements, because they were useless, and actually ended up in town meeting with one of them. Yeah, if, you know, at that time, probably what they should have done, if they would think about this whole job, and actually, you know, when you're constructing that building, is to put the water main through, connect your fire line and everything right off of there, and you'd be all set, but it's water over the dam at this point.
Okay, the, I have two letters. One, the original, on the twenty-first of September, from the Board of Health, and they, at their twentieth meeting, they wrote unanimously that the Board of Health approves the plan. Reiterating the previous comments, prior to construction, proposed septic must be submitted to the Board of Health. And they said the same thing on October fourth, they conveyed the not means the eighteenth, but they're standing by their twentieth, so they were all set. And just Carl's. Anything of significance, Carl, on yours?
Uh, no, most of the items that were in my previous memorandum related to drafting, um, have been addressed, well addressed. Uh, there's only a couple of things in there, and they have to do with changing. Uh, there's a redundant note, um, I want a station label where Marion, the new Marion Street starts. And, uh, trying to adjust the notes so that the, uh, maintenance of the landscape areas is addressed on the plant, and we also had a note about the Sewer and Water, uh, issue that Mr. Glosser just discussed, I don't think there was ever correspondence of it, I think that came from my understanding of a discussion at, that happened at the Sewer and Water Commission, but I believe that issue has been settled. And then we also had some comments on the, um, uh, Mr. Glosser submitted some, um, operation and maintenance, um, documents. And, uh, we commented on them, and we suggested that the typical O and M maintenance covenant that, um, is required for drainage be provided. Um, that's a document that gets recorded, and that that document also include the landscape areas, it would be fairly easy to incorporate.
Okay, y'all set? Uh, we got something from the archives, John. Better than the third of February, twenty-sixth of January, and the Sewer and Water Commission were referencing the fourteen twenty-nine main. And it just said, the board would like to grant an easement up to the end of the property line. So, you read that, they want to grant you, but, but that would only take it up to the end of fourteen twenty-nine, is what, not what they wanted, right?
Yeah. Right. What could be granted to them would be an easement from the extension of Marion Street to this lot. That's the only thing that John has control, what, how that would, uh, help anyone.
Doesn't say from where to where, so. Yeah, that's the point, is it coming off of Marion, is it coming up through fourteen? Doesn't say. Because they weren't specific. Because we had the site plan and we had the subdivision.
Yeah, but like I said, the, the problem with, with the request is that John simply does not own the property.
But you can grant it on the subdivision.
Right, we could grant it from Marion Street here to this lot line, which is the one next.
Oh, given that they, it wasn't specific how far or whatever, I would suggest that someone, you probably want to, we're gonna need that. Does that do you any good, Carl? No? Doesn't even do us any good.
Difficult to execute, and there's no plans to build it, and I agree with John, it's, I don't want to second guess the Sewer and Water Commission here, but it's a short street. I don't know how we're gonna build it. Especially if you can't get all the way through.
Yeah, well, that's another point, you're gonna have to go through, you'll never fit it between the, the lot line and the building.
That building's only nineteen feet off the lot.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, trying to get.
So you're not gonna get a twenty-foot easement, A, so we're gonna narrow it down, and then.
Even if you narrow it down, you can't, to dig in between the building like that, it's a little difficult.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, ask the board what they think, Sarah, what do you think on the easement?
Um, I have, uh, no issues with it, and tend to agree with engineer, town engineer.
Okay.
Phil?
I also have no issues, I agree with the town engineer.
Okay, Kate?
Based on what Carl said, I agree.
Okay, John?
Same.
Okay, we all agree with Carl. Remember that one, Carl.
Yes, Mr. Jim, and I noticed your deft skill there.
That's about the only attaboy you're getting out of those.
But in here, the chair agrees or.
I'll go along with you guys.
How unusual.
Um, the next, all right, so you all set there, Carl? Um, now, we got a bunch of stuff today, and can that be explained to us, John?
You got a lot of stuff from the attorney, is that?
Yeah, from Chris Alpin.
So I think he has the language for the easement, for the, um, for the landscaping. I think he put that in there, and then the other thing was the, I asked him if he could send a document without a legal lease, that basically said that John didn't own that, and he sent something, eight pages of exhibits, and charts, and graphs, and.
We're not gonna start. Okay. All right, now, the question, I guess I'll go to Carl, since we just got it today, or whatever, the landscape thing. Not saying, you have a chance to read it or not?
No, I didn't get it.
All right. We see the thing on his condos, nothing we can do about it. Um, what's your thoughts on how would you want it back and forth before we sign it? Or how would you want to hold it?
Um, so I got the letter from Blatman Bobowski on, on the ownership, I didn't see the one on the land, I guess there was one on landscape covenant?
Yeah, there's one kicking around, all right, so you haven't seen it. My question, Carl, is, we, I suppose, we're gonna assume they've done it what we wanted, or we think it's fine. Do you guys see any reason that to hold Marion up, or that we just, whatever changes made, will be made prior to endorsement?
Uh, yeah, I agree, Mr. Chair. Um, and the, the actual covenant can be, um, that can be a condition of approval and, and subject to review before recording. Can set as condition as to when it should be recorded.
Yeah, I mean, we've all agreed that this is the best way to do it, now it's just a matter of crossing the i's and dotting the t's, so.
Correct, so I don't think that should hold up the approval.
Hey, does anybody have any issues with doing like that?
Well, I, I wonder, Carl, if you can comment any, just, um, number eight. It said, uh, the right to enforce this covenant, um, is given to the town.
I don't think you have that, is that for the landscape one?
Yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't have a copy.
I just gave you my.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, and maybe you need to think about it, but I feel like you've weighed in on this before, and I just can't remember if you were for that or against it.
Yeah, I'm against it, I'm not sure the town should be involved with, um, enforcement of private, really what should be a private agreement.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I, you need to properly review it, but I, that jumped out at me.
Uh, we can make that a condition of approval, and, um, okay. You got anything else?
Okay if the, if Chris Alpin, the lawyer, and Carl just, you know, work it out, without going through me to Carl, and back to me, and back to Chris, and around in circles, or whatever. It's just more efficient, obviously.
I know, I know, John. You used to work for this efficient machine here too, didn't you?
Yeah, I've, I've got no issues with working with the applicant's attorney.
Thank you.
And the document looks pretty good, that maybe have to a little, be a little bit of work on that, on who's enforcing what.
Okay, um, you all set, what, you got, John, for both?
I'm, I'm all set, I mean, I think, you know, like I said, the last time we were here, Carl had a list, and they were mostly just Scrivener things, which we changed all of that stuff, nothing really material changed on the plans, we didn't change any lot lines, any street lines, anything like that, it was all just sort of notes and, and things that Carl, you know, stationing and things, that change in stationing, things that Carl had asked, and it's all been done. And then there was either we missed it, or, or Carl's add, just added a couple of other things, it's probably half an hour's worth of work for the draftsman, so. So I, I would ask if you could, you know, close the hearing, subject to, you know, the, getting the, okay, all right.
I said, do you have anything else?
No.
I didn't say to go on to close and vote, and what's your vote, make it six, zero, is that what you want? Now, we're gonna continue like we normally do, John, as you know, and before I open up to the public, I'll ask, I'll start with John, do you have any questions or comments on either one? Because we're kind of coming by, got them both combined, we've been running together.
No, I believe not.
No. Kate?
No, there's nothing new.
Okay, Phil?
Um, yeah, no, it looks like they made all the changes, and the only thing would be the condition, the new changes that Carl just said out, that we want to make a conditional on, on those.
And Sarah?
Um, regarding the waivers, um, is, is there a sheet in here that, uh, for the fire truck? That you can do with that change of roundings and slight adjustment to the radius?
Well, I can, we can make that sheet for you, but the cul-de-sac itself, the paved portion of the cul-de-sac.
Is the same.
Is gonna be constructed exactly in compliance with your rules and regulations. It's just the, um, layout of the cul-de-sac that's a little bit different, and it just, it helps to provide, as you know, a little more room to the, to the building in front, uh, for the pe, for the back of that building, so that they're not looking at a big wall behind it, so I, we can provide that to you, we can provide it through Carl, um, but it, it's the same geometry that you get on all of your cul-de-sacs, we didn't change that.
Okay.
And actually,
And I think, yeah.
We, we put a, a plan, or a, um, one of the plans. So, sheet five actually shows the geometry.
Yeah.
Of the, of the curving, we can add the fire truck in there if you want to see it, but, but it's the same, you know, it comes in, it's twenty sixty Y, the radius of the curving, and whereas you're coming into the cul-de-sac is forty feet, because you have a thirty-foot layout, and normally a thirty-foot layout on that coming in, so plus ten feet is thirty feet. And then the radius of the cul-de-sac is forty-four feet, and that's what your, your regulations require, so um, you can add it in, but I think we're, we're meeting, you know, every other cul-de-sac that comes in front of the board, we're, we're the same, it's just the geometry of the actual property line around the cul-de-sac that we're asking the waiver for.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine, and I think, um, Carl and/or Deputy Chief Barry had noted that they were happy that there would be a cul-de-sac there where, where none exists currently, so.
And as a professional engineer, and a former town engineer, this thing provides, and I know some of the neighbors kind of disagreed with me, but this provides a ton of, um, uh, public safety enhancement here, because I'm sure the trash truck either backs down this street, or backs out this street, and, you know, oftentimes the trash truck comes when there's kids hanging around, waiting for school, or whatever, and that's just, you know, it's just a fact of life, but if you can avoid that, that's a great thing to avoid, because that's, you know, it could have some really bad consequences.
Yeah. Um, so just really quickly on the waivers, the other waivers, no issue with the tr, uh, no traffic impact, um, no issue with the roundings, um, and no issue with no sidewalks, as there's none currently on Marion Street.
Right.
Um, so, my only concern is with that, um, that knot wood, and, you know, what, what can we do for the neighbors, what is being done?
Well, so, I, I'm gonna tell you, and I know I've already said this. I had knot weed on my yard. So, in the spring, so the knot weed dies, like, or goes dormant, like
Yeah.
most plants in New England, um, starting around Thanksgiving or so. Cut the knot weed down, so there's just a little shoot sticking up. Cut the knotweed down, so there's just the little shoot sticking up, when it starts to come up in the spring, you have to mow it, you almost, for that first few weeks of the growing season, you almost have to mow it every day, don't let the leaves come out on that little shoot that sticks up, because it's photosynthesis, the, and I didn't make this up, Mass Highway, and there's actually a thing, I'll see if I can find it, Mass Highway did a study on it, because they have it all over the place on their highways, if you can mow it for, you know, those first, you know, every other day or so for those, and it takes a while, and you have to be diligent, it'll, it'll give up, because it's photosynthesis, it needs the leaves to collect the sunlight, so that it'll grow, if you can keep it so it's just those little shoots, because they can't gather in the sunlight, it dies, it quits.
So is the applicant committing to doing that?
He's gonna do it on this piece of property, I don't know if he can do it on the Abutter's piece of property, but, I mean, certainly willing to, you know, give my advice to anybody out there, but I, I didn't have a huge patch, it was probably from here to, you know, the little ramp there, and probably this wide where the seats are, and it, and the stuff would grow, it's like amazing how fast it grows, and it would be, you know, ten, twelve feet high, but I just started, I read the thing from Mass Highway, it didn't have anything to do with that, we had another project similar to this, where there was a problem with knotweed, so, that's, that's how I, and then I said, oh, I'm gonna give it a try, and that's how I got rid of it. Now, maybe there's places you can't mow, I don't know, but if you don't let the little leaves come out in the spring, and it's more than just the one year, you have to do it, I think it took me two or three years before it finally just quit, and I don't have it anymore in this spot where it was growing.
Can I, can I talk?
Could you come to the microphone?
When I built the first building in the front there, right, we had to drop the elevation because of the street, had to come down from the street, so, we had to take a lot of fill, and they wouldn't let me go out Marion Street, so I had to pile up the fill on this lot. So that means I'm gonna excavate that lot, I have to drop it down four feet, so there's not, we're gonna get rid of everything, the roots and everything, so there's nothing. By dropping that down, we're going on a gravel, we're gonna take all the roots out and everything else, all the way just on the, on the side where all the things are, because the other side is, the elevation is higher, but there's not gonna be nothing there, it's gonna be all dropped down.
I mean, it's already on the adjacent properties, unfortunately, but...
Yeah, on my property, in fact...
But what he's saying is, if you look at our plan, the grading plan, everything, other than the last ten feet by Steve's, the lot line in the rear, everything's coming down and coming out, so...
I think it goes very far beyond four feet.
Yeah.
Like hundreds, right?
The names on the right.
A hundred?
Maybe more than four feet, yeah, ten feet.
Yeah, okay.
It's the row zones that, yeah, the, the problem with, with the knot wood right now, though, is that it's everywhere in the lot, I mean, I walk around, I, I can't believe, I see it, it's, so I can't, you know, you can't really say who caused it now at this point, but it does take a couple of years, because the row zones, you know, they, they store up the energy, if, if you don't starve them for three, two or three years, they don't die, then they're gonna sprout again, and they can grow, they can grow twenty feet away from where the main plant is, and they just keep sprouting.
I mean, I just, you know, whatever you can do, I think...
I mean, digging, digging down, that, that helps, but unfortunately, like I said, you know, walking around wall plan, it's, it's...
It's all over.
All over.
And it's, it's hard to control.
Hard to control, unless everybody controls it at the same time, you know, so, yeah.
We've killed knotwood for enough, it's not even part of us.
But the other part of it is, once there's someone in there, then, you know, they're gonna, they're not gonna want it growing, so they're gonna work on it too.
But if he mows it, yeah, as you said, if they mow it almost every day in the beginning of the spring, don't let the leaves sprout, and do that for a couple of years...
Yeah, it gives up, it did at my house, it gave up, it's not there anymore.
That's all I have.
I think they're talking knotwood's gone longer than, I think that would've given up long ago.
What's that?
We're talking more than knotwood, they would've said, "See you later." Mike, you all said, Sarah?
Yes.
I gotta, John, I wanna make, understand that with Marion Street, four twenty-nine is part of the subdivision, correct?
It's part of this subdivision, it, it has frontage.
No, I understand, I just wanna make sure, because that was one of the things right out of the gate, I asked Chris Alpin, is he gonna an-narrate it or not, so I just wanted to make sure that the subdivision plan, you're subdivided from four twenty-nine, so you're covered under subdivision control?
Yeah.
It's not just one lot, okay, that's all my questions on that.
This is the plan that will be recorded at the registry...
Yep, yeah, I just saw...
With the land surveyor's stamp, and there's two lots, lot one, and lot two, and this lot has a little bit of frontage on Marion Street. It has legal frontage, so to speak.
Okay, I know I'm beaten, since we're doing both combined, I'll go back again, John, did you have anything on the site plan, or is that all?
No.
Kate?
Nope.
Phil?
Nope.
Sarah?
Nope.
Alright, so that's all kinda combined, before we move on, any questions, comments from the audience before we go?
Steve Lynch, AD Williams Street, I'm just...
Oh, wait, wait till you come up to the microphone.
Steve Lynch, AD Williams Street, I live in the back of the property, back here, I'm just kinda confused on the whole operation, on, you know, what's going on for the subdivision, and how the approval is going, my concern, as I stated before, is some of the trees that were planted back in two thousand fourteen, that was under an order, I believe, from the building, to bring us back to our normal situation after the place was clear cut, I'm looking at the plan that I received here with the green, you know, the green and stuff like that, and it all looks fine to me, but, again, I'm just kinda confused on what is going on, there was talk about a covenant, or, and the town, not to go with the town, another thing is, it says, you know, green giant arbovites, I mean, sure, they're giant when they're thirty feet tall, but if they plant two foot tall, it's gonna take thirty years to grow, doesn't have a quantity, so I'm just kinda, you know, how, what's going on, and just kinda confused on what happens if these die, obviously you don't go to the town, with the new owner of the property, do I approach them, or, you know, I, I'm just confused about the whole thing.
Okay, well, we've kinda accommodated, they've accommodated you, but it's, you have a point on, John, do you have a plan that shows how many and so on?
Yeah.
Okay, can you show here, Steve, right now, so he sees?
Right, I believe on one of the sheets it says...
That's probably just a colored up one he gave you, right?
It has a schedule, okay, Steve?
Which I haven't seen, so that's, if I did see it, then I probably wouldn't be at the podium.
So, so...
John, go ahead, show, yeah, it's for him.
Here, Steve, so there's the symbol, green giant arbovite, the Latin name, you're gonna plant them five to six feet high, and there's gonna be forty-nine, now, green giant arbovite grows faster than arbovitae, they've been bred, hybrid, specially so that they grow faster, the problem with putting ones in that are too big to start with is they tend to die, so you don't wanna have something too big, but it's gonna be six feet high, I don't have the information with me, but it doesn't, you know, it's probably eight to ten years, they're thirty feet, so...
Is it possible to make them a little taller, I mean, my fence is six foot, and I can clearly see over my fence right now, so, and I don't have any pictures, but back when they planted trees, they were, they were forced to plant sixteen to eighteen-foot tall trees, those are now subject to be chopped down, those are giving me quite the buffers, excuse me, John, no mind, those are giving me quite the buffer zone right now from one A, so if it's possible just to maintain that buffer zone that's there now, knowing that the, some of these thirty, forty, fifty-foot trees are coming down, knowing that, it's in some way, instead of me waiting the ten years for these to get twenty feet tall, can we go some, a little taller where I get the privacy immediately and not waiting, that's kinda...
John, you're not cutting any of the trees up there at the edge?
No.
So he's gonna have the trees and these in front?
Right, if there's any trees, we're not plant, we're not cutting down trees to plant trees, believe me, so if there's any trees...
Do you understand that?
If I can clarify something, I mean, there is trees that were planted back in two thousand fourteen that are thirty and forty feet tall...
Yeah.
That are outside of the ten-foot zone that's there now, so these trees are definitely outside, they're, they're getting cut down, I do believe, because you're not going within the ten feet, understandable, but these other trees that are fifty...
There are some trees that will come.
Those will be coming down, I'm quite obvious, it's quite obvious what's gonna happen in the land back there, again, I'm not opposed to what's going on, it's just, I'm kinda concerned that, we fought back in two thousand fourteen to get these trees planted back there, and now they're on the chopping block, and that's fine, and let's move forward with the property and stuff like that, but here I am again, in front of the board, trying to fight for my privacy, so to speak.
Why are they gonna give you a cut, John?
Well...
How far off the property line are they?
So there's, there's a bunch of white pines here, I don't know where these thirty-foot trees are, we're not gonna take down any thirty-foot trees, but starting at about ten feet, we have to cut down to make a level area here for the house, so, these trees that were located by survey are four-inch pine, four-inch pine, four-inch spruce, four-inch pine, four-inch white pine, three-inch spruce, four-inch spruce, so they're all small trees, we don't have the heights, but I mean, I can, these trees are probably six or even ten feet high.
Absolutely, absolutely, we're gonna work together, okay.
So, these trees, the installation of these trees are gonna be bonded through the planning board, so unlike the site plan, they're gonna be bonded, and then, John's not gonna get his money back until the town engineer and the planning board are convinced that the trees are, you know, alive, they're thriving, they're growing, and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and so, and then the other part of it is, and the attorney's gonna work this out with the planning board and the town engineer, is that there's gonna be a covenant, that this guy can't just go in there and knock these trees down, if he does, he's gotta put them back up, so, so I think that, I understand what you're saying, you're getting, it's a little bit smaller than what you have there now, but I'm gonna tell you, in my estimation, and I'm not someone who says things lightly, Steve, you are better protected, because the planning board is gonna hold a good deal of money to make sure that this goes in, and that they thrive, and this doesn't, you know, to build this road and everything, and get everything, and get the money back, it takes quite a long time, it's a few years.
I don't doubt that you're gonna plant the trees, I mean, the trees that were planted back then have been growing fine, and again, now it's a concern that these are gonna get chopped down.
Any of these that are arbovites, I'm not gonna cut them down to a length, I'm gonna dig them out and put them here, I'm just gonna mow them, I mean, why would I want, waste those trees, if these are all arbovites, I'll just put them in here.
Just to speak, just to speak, these are not arbovites, there is no arbovites back here whatsoever.
They're all white pines.
These, John, you planted back in two thousand fourteen, and you know why they were planted, you extended my fence for another reason, you put a fence in over here for another reason, again, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with everything, my only thing is, the five-foot trees being planted back here has not given me any privacy for at least another...
How, how tall do we...
I, I would like to see eight, which is at least two feet over my fence, which will give me a little bit more than what I'm losing, I mean, that's kinda, I think that's being fair, and I'm not asking for too much.
We would accept that condition, and we'll change the plan when we change, when the cost changes to put an eight-foot tree.
And the quantity, you have the quantity, I don't have that, I would like to...
It's not on the screen?
No.
Forty-nine.
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 And that's all along this area here?
No, there's twenty-eight in the back.
No, that's all along, but you can, I can count them for you and tell you how many you're gonna get. In the specific scheme, as how they're to be planted, right?
Twenty-eight, it looks like.
Double row of green arbovite planted eight feet on center, so within that ten feet, every eight feet this way, there's a plant, and then coming back the other way, in between those, every eight feet is a plant, so there's something ten feet wide, about from here where John's sitting, and there's two rows of plants that are staggered, he should know the quantity.
So it looks like twenty, twenty-eight.
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 Exactly, that's the quantity that's going in.
Fourteen times two.
That's the count anyways.
It's right there, you can just count it, and the other ones are here, and there's four here, so that's what the forty-nine is.
Seventy-five, yeah.
Twenty-eight in the back, okay, that's, that answers my question, how many in the back, and if they're eight foot high, I really, I don't have really any more concerns.
We'll change it to eight, and then as I said, Steve, and not to beat this to death, but you're gonna be more protected, because for the next three or four or five years or whatever, this board's gonna hold back money, until they're satisfied that the things are planted, that they're gonna live, that they're the right size, that, you know, it meets the plan.
I'm, I'm confident with that, the thing, what would happen six years from now, let's say, you know, eight and nine and died, then what would be?
Well, so, then there's gonna be a covenant, right, an agreement that the owner of that property is responsible to replace those trees.
And how's that enforced?
Well, that's gonna be between Carl and the president.
You know, do I knock on their door, or something like that, I mean, it's just, I, I'm, I'm kinda...
I, I can...
I'm pretty sure they'll grow, because the trees that were planted there back in two thousand fourteen took off, and they look great, so I'm not really wondering, I'm kinda wondering what if, you know, let's say what if doesn't happen, then there's no concerns, but if does happen, that would be one of my concerns, if all of a sudden they're all dead.
So, so that's the best I can tell you, is the way the process works is at least they're gonna get planted, they're gonna get planted at the height that you're requiring, they're going to be alive and thriving before this board says, okay, we're gonna release the money back to John Marini, and then after that, there's gonna be this agreement, we can get you a copy of it before the board votes on it, and it's going to, you know, basically lay out how those things get replaced if there's a problem.
Yes, that's all, that's fair enough.
I think it's about the best that can be done to, you know, accommodate what you're asking for, we're not, we're not having a problem with what you're asking for.
No, and that was a couple of my concerns, and I think you've answered the question, obviously I'd like to see some of the stuff, you know, that's in, because I, I don't understand what a covenant is, and what happens there, I just don't understand how, I trust the board that they're gonna do the right thing, as well as Mr. Marini, I trust, I mean, I don't disagree with any of you guys, it's just I'm looking out for what if, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, okay? First thing is, we should vote the waivers, so I'll make a motion on the subdivision, to vote favorable approval on all the waivers, we'll do middle, okay?
These are the four on the front page?
Yes, yeah, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, before I close both hearings, first off, some of the special conditions, naturally, we're gonna have for the subdivision is, comments by the town engineer of October fifth, I'd be to add it to the plans prior to endorsement? Too fast for you, Kate, you all said?
October fifth or sixth?
No, Carl said the fifth, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the second condition will be the landscape covenant to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer prior to endorsement, and the last one that I'm, that was just right now, that I think maybe we put in, is that all plantings along the back of the lot of Butting, the Lynch property, shall be installed prior to a house permit being issued, or the road base being complete, and the trees will be eight foot high, I mean, I'll go back to that, all plantings along the back of the lot of the Lynch property shall be installed prior to a house permit being issued, or the completion of the road base coat, whichever is first, okay? Yep?
Could you make that upon issuing occupancy permit, because we don't wanna put the trees up before we build the house, with all the construction going on?
I'm just asking the back, John, just the one on the Lynch property.
Yeah, the Lynch property, can I just do that, and what's it, before I get the occupancy permit?
No, the, the problem with that is those, is... No, the, the problem with that is those, is you can get the occupancy permit before the road is bonded, I mean unbonded.
But I don't have to bond the road, that's, that's the problem, do I have to bond that?
You're gonna have to bond this, yeah.
No?
Yeah.
This is subdivision, John, just like a...
So all we're asking is, just to stick those plants in early on, that's all.
Yeah, the one, just these ones, it, it makes sense, John, that they're not gonna be in your way.
They're out of your way, they're inside, and they can't touch them.
I just thought during the construction of the...
Oh, no, no, that's why I just said along there, it gives a longer growing time, okay? The rest of it, how about it?
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we, we have a, it probably should've been on here, it, you can see it on the other one, but it's cut off. But we have a grading plan for how the house fits on here, how the septic fits on here, and we basically start ten feet. We're not doing anything within ten feet of that lot line, that's where the, other than planting those trees.
Okay, and I'll...
So it makes sense what you, what you asked.
Okay, and I'll break up the last one, and the trees now shown on the plan shall be eight foot in height.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what we want, um, anybody?
I think though, Carl, you want something on the drainage, do you want, you wanna add that in as a key condition?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that needs to be a special condition or not, but there's an O and M covenant that goes on for the drainage, per, per section four, what I mentioned in my fourteen...
He's gonna provide it.
Okay.
Didn't want him to feel left, so...
Uh, never mind, John. Okay, with those, and we have no special conditions, I understand, on fourteen twenty-nine, okay? So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Main Street subdivision.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, why don't we vote that first? Make a motion to vote the four special conditions as we discussed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions of those? Okay, being on, all's in favor?
Aye.
We already voted the waivers, so we've taken care of everything except the final vote. Make a motion to approve Marion Street?
Second.
Subdivision?
Subdivision, yep.
All right, we have a second for Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, now, I'll make a motion to close fourteen twenty-nine Main Street.
Second.
We have a second from Kate, any discussion, all is in favor? Aye. Make a motion to approve fourteen twenty-nine Main Street without standard conditions, with no special conditions.
Second.
Okay, second from Phil, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate, bye, John.
Thank you, thanks Members of the Board.
Bye, John. Bye, John.
Thanks, Carl.
Run, John.
See you soon.
All right, are we done tonight?
Five minutes.
Five minute, you wanna give me? All right, bye.
Good night, thank you.
Oh, we get, you're on next anyway. All right, um, next is, we have a continued public hearing for East Waffle Clock Tower, and I know we want extension, they're extending the zoning board, so... All right, on behalf of the client from Legacy Engineering, um, writing a request to continue this discussion to our first meet November, in addition, he's gonna give us an extension of time through the thirtieth of November. I'll make a motion to grant extension through the thirtieth of November?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and he's asking without testimony, and is there room on, at the end on the sixth?
Um, on the sixth, we, I'm sorry, six, October twentieth, we're one, two, three, four...
He said the first of November.
Well, the first of November.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we have, um, seven fifteen and seven twenty with two new hearings, so I'm not sure where you wanna put them.
Two site, uh, two what?
One is, um, off, Warwick, um, Mr. Closer's subdivision, and the other is nine thirty-one Main Street at seven fifteen and seven twenty.
Only do the one, can you fit it between Warwick, right before then?
Before Warwick?
Yeah.
At like seven-ten?
Good move, yeah.
Okay.
Seven-ten, okay, make a motion to, well, we'll continue this public hearing to seven-ten P.M. on November, was it sixth?
Third.
Third, okay, that being said, that's the next time we'll take that one up, so, now... We have a continued public hearing for Northwoods Estates, representing the Northwood Estates.
Rob, you're back, you're a hearing consultant.
Okay, you said something interesting, Rob, is this just a five-minute? You said it's like five minutes?
I hit nothing new ones, except what Kyle gave me tonight.
Oh, Kyle's, okay. Okay, with the hearing being opened and continued, uh, before you put up, oh, well, I'll let you go first, Rob. I don't think you've, if you have, you probably haven't seen Kyle's comment.
I just got him tonight.
All right, so, okay.
And I'm fine with it. We, we didn't expect to get any, to be honest, we met with Kyle, and Kyle was on vacation last week, so we weren't really expecting comments tonight from him, because he was away, but we appreciate that he got something to us.
I will note they're draft comments, so there's still things to do, but they're draft, so we've got something to look at.
That's fine, it's funny how you go on vacation, these guys want it, right? It's always vacation time.
No, no, he told us he was gone, so we, we were understanding that, it was fun.
Last time we talked, you were going on vacation, right?
Haven't left yet.
Going to Nashville or something, right?
I'm going on vacation in November. I'm sure you're gonna continue this through the hearing that I'm gone.
No, we know you're gonna continue strictly for Concom, so...
So since the last meeting, I'm just gonna be brief, go with the change that we made to the plan. So we, we had a chance to meet with Kyle, Mr. Walsh and myself, and we, um, primarily the things that we had some good discussion on with Kyle, we, you know, John Walsh had agreed to do the off-site improvements that Kyle was looking for on Dover Road. And over here, this is, so ideally what's happening is we're gonna be reconstructing in some sense, grinding this down, repaving, moving away, bringing the granite curb all the way down to the intersection. And pretty much similar over here, new granite curb to the intersection, new handicap ramps, grinding out the intersection, repaving it, and doing all that work. I've also shown on this plan that you're seeing tonight is the, uh, we did modify the waiver plan a little bit. I did put in a driveway that's twenty feet wide to accommodate the fire deputy chief. We extended the sewer, moved away from the wetlands a little bit, brought it up into the road, and brought it all the way up to High Street. We also did the same, we hadn't even had a water line on there before, but the water line loops up to High Street as well. The, um, other change I made was this lot eleven now encompasses the drainage basin, so that this lot will be the one that maintains the basin, so it's not on a lot that's out in Wimbo, we're in somewhere, and no one's gonna come and check on it. So now the drainage basins run separate lots. We did size the drainage basin for the waiver roads, so we did some calculations for the overall subdivision providing drainage for, incorporated the drainage basin much smaller than the one with the full road, but we do incorporate one in that area. Again, tho, those are basically the major changes that we did, since the last time we saw it, we went through Kyle's other comments. And we did, and I did mention this to Kyle at the meeting, and I did see it in his draft, we did do a survey up High Street for him. We shot the center line all the way up to, what's that road, Delaney?
Horn?
Yeah, we went all the way up there to see if he could run the sewer up there in the future, so I, I'll give him a plot plan of that, showing a profile, we agreed to help him with that. And that's pretty much it, I did file a request for scenic road with this new revision, so I'm, you know, we're gonna have to schedule a hearing for that, and I would assume maybe we can continue this. When is it?
October twentieth.
If we might go continue this to the same night would be fine with us.
Okay, the issue being, were, are you submitting anything else before the twentieth?
No, I don't need to, right? I mean, I'll go through Kyle's graphs, it looks like minor stuff.
The point is, Rob, is, you're already at day fourteen.
Yeah, I know, so I'm not gonna submit anything, we gotta come here on the twentieth for the scenic road, so we'll just continue it, so in case anyone's here and has questions on the subdivision.
Okay.
Do you, do you see anything major that you need, Kyle, from us?
No, no, we'll look at the, in between, we'll look at the scenic road application, and we'll look at the site distance up there, and we'll finish the drainage review, and this will not, will be, not be a draft, we'll, we'll issue it full. Um, so we'll tie together everything together, the only thing I won't see is the twenty-foot road, I don't think that's in this set of plans, is it? Or is it?
In those plans.
It is, okay, all right.
We, we don't have those plans.
Yeah, you do.
We do?
Yeah. You don't have this sheet.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Oh, you want this one? I can email you that in color even.
Email it to the board, so, put it up so people can go.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll email this, the, kind of the presentation one, yeah, you don't have this.
But the reconfiguration of lot eleven, we have.
That's in the plan set, yes. In the, in the, in the modified, rose is twenty feet with a turnaround for that single house, you have all that in your plan set. That's all in there. So what I did in the new plan set is I reversed it, I put the waiver plans first, and the non-waiver at the end as supplemental, to show that we could build it without it. Yeah, just kinda preparing, 'cause I, I got the sense that everybody was in favor of going with the one lot, and the neighbors were and whatnot, so...
Okay.
You got my sense, yeah, okay. Now, just for the update for everybody, is the thing holding this back? Not necessarily, I guess, is, what's conservation, the last hurdle?
We're next week with them.
Okay, but is that the last, nothing else?
Nothing.
Other than conservation, it's us, okay.
Yeah, we have, I thi, I think it's pretty clean at this point.
So you don't, you don't anticipate moving any roads that would constitute a new plan?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a matter of them playing with the drainage or...
Yeah, they were, we were postponing them till we got a feel for the waiver plan, because that was something they wanted, because there's less work in the buffer, obviously, in that area.
Are they, now, just my advice, make sure you get approval on both.
I might continue them one more time.
But you want...
So you guys vote.
So you want this, so...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, 'cause if we say no, just, you got nothing from them.
They're not gonna wanna approve both.
What do you do if they go with the waiver one and we say no?
I know, I agree, that's why, I'll probably push it out one more meeting with them.
Okay, just, I would explain it to them, Rob, just so you don't get in a, catch twenty-two.
No, I, I understand, I, I agree.
All right, um, while we wrap it up, we do have, you have questions on this? I assume you're here for this subdivision? If you wanna come up?
Maybe outside.
I think this is the woman who called me. She's inquiring about the lots.
Oh, okay, I'll inquire about the lot.
I don't think she's opposed to it, she'd like to move into it.
I probably shouldn't say it, but that's the only reason why women call you, for lots?
At least they're calling still.
Lots in...
What? I couldn't resist that. Lots for sale, okay. You the new Bill Maloney?
No.
Okay, uh, before I, we'll continue this, John, do you have any questions, comments?
Has the street name been assigned for that single lot, one, uh...
So, the street name we pulled back, and Carl and I and John all had a discussion on it. We think that most likely that will get a high street number, if it becomes one lot, so we won't name it.
Okay.
I think it should.
Get a high street, yeah, I, we all agree.
That would be...
And there's plenty of space for it.
If the chair would allow, that would be consistent with twenty-six Baker and also the fifty-two, fifty-four Pete Street, um, and said there's room, and plenty of room in the numbers up there to give that a high street address.
Yeah, so they're in control, don't care where you, so they don't care where you put your number.
Right, but just for consistency...
Separate.
Um, I think that, that the board's being consistent with this, so that we don't see any reason why that can't go down that way. And I've also put in the memo, it's in the draft right now, and said, there shouldn't be any guessing, the, the, the first one is gonna be Dover Drive. It just, it'll be an extension of Dover Drive, we don't wanna call it Dover Drive extension by name, but it'll be an exten, so that'll be Dover Drive, and I guess Jack Walsh Lane has already approved, uh, the name, so I don't know that we have any much, I don't know what you have to do with Dover Drive, it's already there.
Nothing.
You know, I think we can modify that and just call that Dover Drive, and the other one will remain Road A, and, and that's the way it'll be.
Any other questions on, Kate?
No, we don't have anything.
Nope.
No.
Sarah?
Um, so it looks like you've, you've taken out that lot five slash lot six, um, just wondering if you're gonna renumber them?
I wasn't. Do you want me to, I can.
I mean, uh, it's more clear.
It was easier for me not to.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just pulled it out, so what do I have? I go like, so I go, let's do three, four, and then it's the six.
Would it be easier to call it five slash six to show that there isn't a lot that seems somewhere?
It just goes on a deed, it really doesn't mean anything.
Yeah.
It's just a number.
It is, I wouldn't, I, there's always gonna be a question in somebody's mind, is where is that lot, right?
That's good to leave it like that, make people think, mysterious.
No, remember, it's in perpetuity.
Leave them guessing.
I know a few developers that would sell lot five to somebody.
Yeah, you're right. It's there, you don't see it? I could change it if you want, Sarah's not...
I don't wanna get sued.
To change it.
You wanna change it?
Yeah, otherwise there would be this, this question.
If there are no major implications to, to changing it.
It was just work for me, I just got lazy.
You don't do this either.
You're not on vacation yet.
I'm, I what?
You're not on vacation yet.
Kyle says his draftman can do all his stuff in a half hour.
I'm trying to take more vacations, I have, it's hard. We're not getting any younger, Jack.
What's this, we, stop.
We, we're going down together, Jack, we're all going together.
Okay, um, do we need extension, Kate?
No, we have one through, we're good through the thirty-first.
Okay, now we're gonna continue this to, right after this?
Um, I can't, let's see the...
Right after the, uh...
Seven oh six is the, yeah, we can do that, because seven oh six is, um, High Street, Scenic Road.
Okay.
And then it's Bristol, but I have nothing on them, and then it's Heidi at seven sixteen, so seven oh seven, yes.
We'll continue this public hearing until October twentieth at seven oh seven.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kinda knew something's up when I didn't see the other guy here.
Have a great weekend.
You too. Don't work too hard.
JT's getting married this weekend.
Who's getting married?
JT.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, no, I was talking about Johnny. Johnny Adelbro.
Do we continue to...
He's on vacation.
The twentieth.
What?
That's seven oh seven. He's on vacation? Take the RV?
I don't know, I forgot, he told me he was gonna be away, I emailed him, said you're coming today.
I had two things, I gotta find out.
Don't talk about the other one, he's first getting married.
JT is?
He's getting married, I'm there.
He's in Raleigh?
Bristol, right? And, uh, for the Mount Hope card.
Okay, out by the bridge?
Yeah.
You going?
I am. Once I get home, I'll, I got five people out of my office.
Who's it gonna come?
Dana went to London last week for four days, we got back last Monday, and Thursday she got sick. Joyce went down Friday, Chris went down Saturday, and two of the field guys went down Monday. And then my girlfriend went down Tuesday, and she was no part of that, she got it from a wedding that she was out Friday night.
Better just put yourself in a room, and don't go, and don't go anywhere.
Does anyone though, come back to work, does anyone guys, you can't come in here.
No, they can, you can't, right?
Yeah, that's what I said, you go, if you come in your office, I'll leave.
That's a wrap, okay. Make a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and close, done? Three, two, one, done.